Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Bob and Claire.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. This Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. And if you would please, everyone would like you to join me and stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
Katie Chakina.
Present.
Nayeti Patel.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representatives are present.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Files, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. And now is the fun part of the meetings. I'll even remember to bring my reading glasses. First thing we have is a You Make a Difference Award. And we're awarding this You Make a Difference Award to Bethany Mayer. Thank you all. Come on up. And I will, this is the nomination for Bethany by Deborah Walker. Since stepping into her role as MADA executive director, Bethany has revitalized the MADA organization into a dynamic hub of inclusion, opportunity, and community vitality. Under her leadership, MADA transformed itself from a nearly dormant nonprofit into a thriving center, offering a commercial kitchen for food entrepreneurs, low-cost business space, and educational programs for children and adults alike. Bethany is leading an ambitious expansion of MADA into downtown Montrose, revitalizing MADA's role in the historic Tortilla Flats neighborhood, and organizing cultural celebrations and festivals, bringing joy, community connection, and cultural expression to Montrose. Bethany embodies the very best of community-oriented leadership. She listens to what the community needs, reimagines how an organization can serve, and then takes concrete, often courageous, steps to rebuild and expand service. Under her direction, MADA is not simply surviving, it is thriving and evolving in ways that uplift the neighborhood, the city, and the region.
I just want to say thank you. I was surprised by his call from Lisa last week. We're super excited about our expansion downtown. I know there's an agenda item tonight on it, but we did just buy two buildings downtown to expand our commercial kitchen space. We've really outgrown this space, kind of surprisingly, too. We have a long waiting list of folks who want to come and utilize the kitchen. And yeah, we're super excited. It'll be a full commercial kitchen with multiple users at once, and the other side will basically be a restaurant bar, coffee bar, with the opportunity for those users to serve their food, and also have kind of grab-and-go lunch/dinner spot. So all those users not only have a kitchen, but also a place to sell their food.
And next, I'd like to invite Kelly Thompson to come up. And this is a proclamation for Hospice Month. Whereas, for more than 30 years, Hope West has been Montrose's community-owned nonprofit organization where people turn when facing life's most difficult times, and whereas, as a nationally-recognized hospice, palliative care, dementia support, adult bereavement, and children's bereavement program, Hope West provides care to more than 3,700 individuals each year. With every year, the need for Hope West serves us growing. And whereas, Hospice and Palliative Care Month highlights the importance of comfort for those facing aging, serious illness, or grief, Hope West is privileged to provide exceptional care every day, helping patients and their families transform an overwhelming and fearful time into one of comfort, healing, and hope. And whereas, this public declaration celebrates our community's unique spirit of helping each other every day and honors the compassion of many nursing assistants, social workers, chaplains, physicians, councilors, registered nurses, and volunteers at Hope West. And whereas, Hospice and Palliative Care Month presents a unique opportunity to increase awareness of these programs and honor all who make them possible. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Hospice Month in the City of Montrose, and encourage the support and participation of friends, neighbors, colleagues, and fellow citizens in hospice activities and programs now and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cosby affix the official seal of the City of Montrose this Fourth Day of November 2025.
Well, thank you. We are very honored by this proclamation. As Dave said, our need continues to grow. I think last year, when I accepted this, we were at about 110 people on our census. This summer, we hit 123. So we continue to serve this community proudly as a nonprofit. So thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is the Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from using any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. We give each person coming up three minutes. And those wishing to make public comment, we'd ask you to just line up in the aisle here, and when you come up to make public comment, please state your name and where you're from. And if you would, go ahead and please line up. And go ahead. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Members of the council, members of the community, it is my pleasure to be here tonight. I was a little apprehensive, and then I remembered.
If you tell me your name, please.
Mel McElvee. See, I'm so comfortable with all of you. I'm just gonna have a conversation. I was gonna say, that is the pleasure of doing work with municipal administrators. So, for those of you that don't know, I am the Chair of the Uncompagre Valley Alliance, a local community organizing group that has been active since 1982. We have currently over 70 members. The UVA and All Points Transit have been working in partnership for more than a year, working to advance specifically the movement of Montrose's public transportation-based needs, expressed through surveys, conversations at doors, and through group meetings. I'm also here as a constituent and community member who is one paycheck, one medical emergency, or one car breakdown away from not being able to access resources in this town. And so it's particularly important to me that we pay attention to the funds that we are collecting. Just about a year ago, the 2A lodging tax that we were integral in passing by 242 votes. Because of this, we strongly believe that this is our door-knocking and our community education efforts. When the community knows about public transportation, they will utilize it. We've invited people here with us today. You saw the wonderful support of All Points Transit. In addition, we also had 30 of our members here as well because it is that important to us and for this community. We know that the public transportation needs more investment. We need to be serving this community. We know that we need more creative solutions to properly move around the residents of Montrose so that they can lead productive lives. Now, I would like to pass it on to my teammate Kendra to continue.
Actually, we'll just give you each three minutes. You don't have to pass it on to her. You don't have to give up time. Yeah, I want to make sure we give you the full three minutes.
Okay. I'm Kendra Stuckey. It was really nice to just talk to you all on a one-on-one basis and informally. We always appreciate coming to these meetings and clarifying where we are as an organization. I'm on the leadership team of the Uncompagre Valley Alliance. And as Mel stated, Uncompagre Valley Alliance, first up, we successfully created a funding stream from the lodging tax revenues. And meanwhile, All Points Transit made several advancements and changes to their system in the course of a year to better serve the community, knowing that they had very significant financial constraints. We're here tonight to ask the city to prioritize this money going to the city's only public transportation system, All Points Transit. In addition, UVA and All Points Transit want to collaborate with the city manager's office, as well as the community development office, about the innovative and creative ways the revenues from the lodging tax can be spent to improve a robust local transportation infrastructure and bring community voices to the table. We'd love to have a meeting with anybody that's interested prior to the next budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Brown, Montrose. I'm here to ask you yet again to declare Montrose a non-sanctuary city. I am not against immigration. Matter of fact, our country is founded on immigration. The differences between legal and illegal immigrants is how they entered our country and how they will assimilate into this country, and how will they work within the confines of our immigration laws. A major part of our Colorado and national budgets have been going to illegal immigration support. We seem to bend over backwards to provide a gold-plated welcome mat for those individuals who have entered our country illegally while at the same time ignoring the problems of our own citizens who need essential services. Please declare Montrose non-sanctuary before it is too late. Speaking of essential services that are needed, the city needs to step up to provide aid and assistance to our own citizen homeless population. Right now, the weather is getting colder, and there is only one place in town where a homeless population can get out of the cold, the Lighthouse or Brown Center. It was good that the last city council meeting entered into an agreement with the Lighthouse, Inc. That only provides a place for up to 30 people to get out of the cold. Not only should the city take an interest in helping the homeless, but to help the agencies who are providing their services. The Lighthouse, Inc., and Shepherd's Hand, both agencies provide essential services to the most needy in our community, and the city keeps finding reasons to shut them out. Why not work with the Lighthouse, Inc., and Shepherd's Hand, providing financial support for daily operations and for facility support like kitchen materials and roof repairs? We saw what a fiasco last year turned out to be when the city refused to help and our homeless citizens, and the Methodist church stepped in to help. Look what it got them, a series of legal problems because the city will not and has not stood up to its responsibilities. Shepherd's Hand does so much more than a hot meal daily. They serve breakfast and lunch.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Took the words out of my mouth. My name's Justin O'Leary Grant. Yeah, it's about the homeless. We got a problem. We do. I want to say the right thing. I was managing a moral rest church last year, and I take on that responsibility. Obviously, budget's a problem. But it costs $60,000 to put us in jail for a year. But you guys think that that's a solution to this problem? It's not. As a community, we should be loving our neighbors. We should. We're all neighbors. And I've been working nonstop since, like, end of July with the first stand, carry maddocks. So I haven't had time to really be involved. Now that the stand is over, I'll be able to be more involved and help this project. I'm just asking, like, if we're camping and out of sight and keeping it clean, you don't be bothered. If we're making a mess, I'll police our own. I will get the messy people out of here on my own. And they don't need to be here. They don't. But there are people here from Montrose since 89, moved down from Montana. But I did 12 years, not consecutively, but I did 12 calendar years in DOC. I don't like to be inside. Locked doors bother me. I have a dog that I don't like to be a part of or away from. I mean, they're my friends. We're human. I just want to be treated like we're human, that's all. And jealousy's the answer. It's not. But I'm willing to work with you guys if you're willing to work with us to actually get down to a legitimate answer on this. Because jealousy's not the right answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Filberto Bill Cordova. I'm originally from Montrose, but I now reside in Grand Junction. What I'm here about is to pat my buddy in the back for what she has done for MADA. I was one of the original members of MADA in the late 60s. And I was chairman for about 30, 40 years when we built the MADA building. So MADA has always been for the community and for equal opportunity for everybody. That's the reason we started MADA. And I thank Montrose for what you have done with MADA. It was a struggle, but being signed from Grand Junction, I can't say anything else. But I love Montrose. I grew up here. I know this building, just about every street in the city. So I left there about 40 years ago, and Montrose has always been my home. And you guys take good care of it, okay? Treat everybody like you're God's children. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't encourage applause, I'm sorry. But thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else wanting to make public comment tonight? And seeing none, we'll move on with our next item on the agenda. For approval of minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 regular city council meeting, and we would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21, 2025 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. And since Mr. Reed is off-site today, we will vote on our computers for our vote here, and we'll have him vote by voice for his vote. Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, Ordinance 2695 on First Reading, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2695 on First Reading, and Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, Providing and Appropriating Funds for Defraying the Expenses and Liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 2026. Finance Director Shani Wittenberg. And to put this in layman's terms, this is the budget.
Sorry, too many chords over here. Okay. Let me get there. Sorry. When we go from Cresson to Google Meet, then it's a little bit of a challenge. Why don't I slideshow? Okay. Thank you all, and thank you for coming to the Budget Open House earlier today. I am just gonna run through a few slides just to highlight what we talked about at the Budget Open House. Since all of you have been along for the ride in 2025, I couldn't put this budget together without city council, city manager's office, all of the department heads and supervisors. We all worked together to come up with a proposed budget that will meet the needs of our community. So Ordinance 2695 is on the agenda tonight for first reading. Just to give a visual to the public and to whoever's interested, our budget for 2026 is $168.9 million. Of that, this little slide shows that we have many different funds that make that up. General Fund being $44.5 million, and is the main operating fund of the City of Montrose. The City Attorney's Office, City Council, City Manager, Finance, Community Development, Human Resources, Streets, Parks, even some public safety money comes out of the General Fund, and it is supported solely with sales tax. The City of Montrose does not certify a mill levy nor collect property taxes. I'm not gonna read all of these numbers to you, because I've already read them to you once today. But as a visual, this will also be in the packet so people can reference it if they need it. This is just a chart showing that sales tax for 2026, we are projecting somewhat flat, but it is a 4% increase over our actual collections of 2024. Infrastructure and facility projects in the 2026 budget include the new Public Works Facility at $40.9 million. Childcare facility renovations, we're gonna finish the childcare facility, and it's gonna cost around $250,000. Rio Grande East Oak Grove Roundabout and the Rio Grande Extension Phase 1 of $5 million. Sidewalk replacement and cost share program for ADA accessibility of $100,000. Move Mobile Continue Its Projects at $5 million. The design for the 6700 Road Cedar Creek Bridge replacement of $250,000. West Main Rail, Railroad Crossing Sidewalks, so that'll finish the West Main project that we completed in 2025 for the street. And then the North Hillcrest Sidewalk Extension on 6700 Road, which is grant-funded by DOLA at $700,000. One of our major funds is an enterprise fund called the Water Fund. It provides all the water services to our constituents. In 2026, $11.78 million is budgeted. I want to highlight that we are increasing rates inflationarily, 3%. So all of the water costs will go up 3% plus 25 cents per 1,000 gallons for the pass-through project for Project 7. And that means a 66-cent increase per residential customer on their base fee, 40 cents per 1,000 gallons used. The sewer fund, proposed expenditures are right around $6.6 million. We're preparing for state and federal mandates for the wastewater treatment plant. Therefore, we are gonna issue bonds in 2026 to make those improvements. A proposed rate increase of 22% has been proposed. Residential customers will see an increase on their bill of almost $6 per month. Trash and recycling, 2026 proposed expenditures is $4.4 million. 20% rate increase, this finishes the rate increases that were proposed several years ago to make this fund healthy again. New rate for residential customers is $31.61. It's a $5.27 per month increase. Commercial and multifamily will see .048 per gallon of trash consumed. And then, if anybody ever has any questions, here's my contact information, plus pictures of all of our department heads at the City of Montrose. We are proud to present this budget to you all for consideration tonight.
Thank you. For the public who don't understand, we start our budgeting process pretty much the day after we passed the budget for the last year. So we've been working on this budget for a long time. A lot of thought goes into this, a lot of preparation goes into this. Are there any questions from council? Are there any questions from our youth council? In the case, we will open a hearing. And are there any questions or comments from the public? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2695 on First Reading as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. We have to get the old vote off. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item. Our next item is Resolution 2025-18, City Council Consideration of Resolution 2025-18, repealing and replacing Chapters 3, 1, -1, 3, -1, -2, and 3, -1, -3 of the City of Montrose Regulations Manual and adopting the 2026 Fee Schedule. City Clerk, Lisa Del Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Frank, and city council. So our proposed fee schedule was presented at the work session on October 20. There have been no changes made. The items in the packet include the same overview, the same redline revisions, and the resolution, the Attachment A, is the final version of the fee schedule revisions. I can give an overview if council would like, or I can answer any questions. But I would also like to point out that a question was raised about mobile vendor fees at that work session. The city clerk's office did some research and provided the information to city council. Our recommendation at the time is to leave the fees the way they are. And we are planning to do a review of all of our mobile food vendor regulations and may bring some proposed changes for 2027 to the fee schedule.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I'd just like to thank you, Lisa, for that additional information you sent us, because that helped, because we did have questions, and you had them. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Katie, anything? Thank you. In that case, we would accept public comment. Is there any public comment on the side? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-18 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to our next item, Resolution 2025-19, City Council Consideration of Resolution 2025-19, A Resolution to Retain the City's Existing Permitting Process and Standards for Electric Vehicle Charging Developments. And this is Community Development Director Jace Hochwald.
Excuse me. Good evening, council. I did present this item at the work session just a couple of weeks ago. No updates there, so I'll make this pretty brief, but just give an overview. In 2024, Colorado House Bill 241173 was approved, and this was specific to electric vehicle charging and the permitting of that. This came about due to vast differences in how jurisdictions across the state were permitting chargers. chargers and just a lack of consistency. So with that bill, what the state did was they came out with an electric vehicle charging model code, and some of the primary goals of that were to streamline permitting, eliminate burdensome hearing processes, and maintain consistency. With part of that bill as well, by December 31st of this year, 2025 jurisdictions over 20,000 in population are required to comply with the House bill. They can do so in three ways. They can either adopt the EV charging model code as written, it's about 90 pages. They can adopt EV charging permitting standards based on the model code guidance, but actually be less restrictive. And then option three is retain their existing permitting processes and standards should they want to. The city's current code already identifies EV charging stations as a standalone use in commercial zone districts and allows them as accessory uses in all non-residential districts. The code also includes specific definitions for EV charging stations. So in short, we have a lot already in our code about EV charging. It is a permit process through a minor site plan review. That is a very straightforward administrative review with no hearings. So ultimately, the recommendation of staff is to stick with our current permitting procedures. They're actually more lenient than the model code, and the state is fine with this approach as well. We did have conversations with them. We are going through a code update process in 2026 where we look at that model code and potentially incorporate, but right now we feel very comfortable retaining our current processes and permitting. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions. This does need to be approved by resolution, and that resolution is within the packet with some pretty boilerplate language, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any questions from our youth council? Thank you. In that case, we would accept public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-19 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion in a second, please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item, City Council Consideration of an expenditure of $57,415.15 for assistance with asbestos remediation of Motta property at 25 and 27 North Cascade Avenue. And first is-
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the Motta Board, and this may be a conflict of interest, so.
So thank you for recusing yourself. We'll give you a minute to exit the chamber. Or maybe a couple minutes. I feel your pain, brother.
Must be tough getting on.
Oh, I tell you what. I feel like such a young punk around all of you. Not between the two of you, no. All right. So with this item, we will turn this over to City Manager Bill Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we were lucky enough to hear from you during the award earlier tonight on what Motta's been doing as far as commercial kitchen and supporting the community, helping with startups and those types of things. And we're lucky enough to have Bethany, who decided to hang around. So if we have further questions after I give a brief summary, I would encourage her to come on up and let all of you know exactly what she's working on. I'm filling in for Anthony Russo, so if I miss something, Bethany, make sure you mention that here in a couple of minutes. But basically, the idea is we had come before City Council in the past to talk about the location downtown at 25 and 27 North Cascade. It is the property that is underutilized, somewhat blighted, and really needs to be redeveloped with some of the hazardous asbestos mitigation needing to be done on the property to allow Motta to go in and make it a space that's really valuable to the downtown and used by the public. So Anthony Russo's done a lot of work on this, partnering with Bethany, with some other team members, really working from the last time they came to City Council with a rough estimate on what the project would be. It has now gone from the planning stage to actually, I believe the contract's been issued to the contractor. They've started work a little bit, now they're on hold waiting for pending this outcome, I believe. And so the request is to have the city contribute to the asbestos mitigation and cleanup of the property, which would be the $57,415.15 that's in the memo. The total project cost is estimated to be around $2 million, which is from Motta money and I believe some outside sources, partnering with Motta. So we, as staff, would recommend approval of this. For the general public, just to know what we're doing and why we're doing this, we, for quite a long time here in Montrose, we believe that one of the roles of local government is to come in and help businesses be more successful if they want us to come in and help them. We don't believe in government coming in and controlling business. We want to help enable them to be successful over a long time, a long period of time, especially in our downtown area. There's unique circumstances with downtown historic buildings and buildings that have been left in disrepair or really gotten to a point where the repairs are not manageable. And so when those properties change hands is when we get developers coming in or organizations coming in that want to do something great for the community. City has gone in and helped with things like asbestos mitigation, fire suppression systems, electrical upgrades. We know that these old buildings downtown have a lot of hazards associated with them, and so we come in and partner. The private sector brings money to the table, or nonprofits will bring their money to the table. The city will be just a small part to make those projects move forward. We've had some great examples up down our Main Street. This is just another one of those projects. We also help with other things, like horizontal site improvements, physical infrastructure improvements. What we don't do is give money over to businesses to help with their operations, their staffing, their salaries, their wages, their inventory, all those types of things that can easily be taken by the business owner and taken out of our community. We believe in reinvesting in the infrastructure and the core of our business community, and so that is what we're trying to do, and thankfully, council's been very supportive of that. Our DART Committee or DART Group, the gathering of 20-plus business owners and interested people that come in and work with Michelle with the DART program, has been amazing, and we've had great success doing this. We also just went to some conferences, and I want to highlight that it is noted to be innovative to do these things, and we've been doing them for over 10 years. So we're really proud of that, and it's something that we're hoping to continue to do. We budgeted these items in various locations in our budget, but if the public wants to look at these types of things, they're in a variety of places like the DART Budget, the council's Economic Development and Community Programming Line Items, the city manager's Community Programming Line Items. That's, those are the different areas where we really get in there and help businesses do great things. Any specific questions?
Any questions? Any questions from our youth council? I would point out, one of the reasons we do this is for the public health and safety. Having an abandoned or underused building becomes not only an eyesore, but becomes a health hazard. And this council considers it our duty to make sure that we are making our community a safe place to live and do business. And having said that, would entertain any public comment on this item? And I think we answered pretty much the questions, but if there's anything you would like to say, Bethany? Great. Yes, please.
Okay, I'm Bethany Maher, as you already met me tonight, but I'll give a little more information about the project. But yes, I've been working very closely with Anthony Russo. He's been lovely, we're two of a kind. But this project, basically, it's two buildings. It's the cell phone shop and the dry cleaners. It's been a dry cleaner since the 20s. Needs serious renovation. Basically, both buildings are coming down to studs. Some really cool historic preservation components. There's a bunch of coupdillas in there that we can uncover, like there are glass openings on the tops of the building. It'll create some natural light, but they're there, just need uncovered. We are, we've been in the demo process since we closed about two weeks ago. We started the day we closed. We have some of the asbestos abatement complete, and yeah, we continue to keep rolling. We think it'll take about a year, we hope. There'll be, so one entire building will be a commercial kitchen, similar to what we have at Motta, but it'll be able to accommodate multiple users at once. That's one of the issues that we currently have, is we're just out of space and time for users. And the other issue that we've been seeing is that the users don't, they still don't quite have their wheels under them to grow their business. So they come in, and they're able to get their business going, and they still can't quite get to a brick and mortar, or maybe they don't even want to. They're starting their side gig, and they want to serve. And so I do have, like Proof Pizza, for example, is selling pizza out of Motta. They have a couple days a week. I have a bread lady selling bread out of there. I have a Monday night meal lady, and it's like, we're not a restaurant. So this concept will provide that. It'll have one side, commercial kitchen, the other side will have a full restaurant. Different from the association where it's not necessarily booth space, it's, you know, Proof will be on Mondays and Thursdays, for example. The Thai truck will be on Tuesdays, that kind of thing. Also, as a user, you would basically be able to come into this place, you can get a coffee from, we're going to partner with a coffee shop, so that they can have a coffee shop. You can come in and get a coffee, you can grab and go a salad or a burrito or whatnot and take it to go. Or you can sit down and have a meal from the user that is serving that day. So it kind of checks all the boxes for what those young entrepreneurs need and what the community wants, and have a variety of food available at the restaurant. So we'll also, we'll do the same with the bar. We'll lease out the bar, and we were having conversations with other, with businesses, local businesses on that piece, so. So we won't necessarily be operating a restaurant as Motta. We'll be working with other organizations, businesses to do that, just to, really to make the project happen. So it's one part kind of historic preservation, one part economic development, downtown development, revitalization, and of course, you know, revitalizing these buildings that, like Bill said, are underutilized. And quite frankly, you know, dry cleaners are not easy on buildings, so. That was, that was kind of the big, big part of that. And in this cleanup process, it's a small part of the process, but it'd be super helpful for us, for the city's support, and the city's been very supportive, and we're super appreciative of that. But we're excited, I think it is an innovative project. I think it's exciting for the community, it's exciting for all of these businesses, and gives them a great opportunity, so. Yeah. Thank you.
I don't remember if I did public comment, or that was part of public comment, but is there anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $57,415.15 for assistance with asbestos remediation of the Motta property at 25 and 27 North Cascade Avenue as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. So that passes four yes and one abstention. And if somebody could grab Mr. Ullivary back? Let's move on to our next item, and while I'm reading, give, have time to get back. City Council Consideration of an Agreement with Brown Hill Engineering and Controls to Provide Software as a Service, SaaS, at an annual cost of $51,160 for the city's supervisory control and data acquisition, or SCADA, system. And this will be Utilities Director David Bries. Mr. Bries?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this item, tonight, we talked about at City Council Work Session here a couple weeks ago, and tonight, we actually have some guests in the audience. We've got Hyrum Webb, who is Utility for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent. His family, Brickman, Avery, and Grayson. They are attending for their civic engagement tonight. And additionally, we have Leif Beckencourt-Eddy, that is one of the staff down at the wastewater plant here, so. Always interesting to have staff and family come and participate in the council meetings. Again, this, this is the control system for the wastewater treatment plant. It's all the logic that operates this plant 24/7 to meet all the state and federal regulations, and with the varying flows that come into the treatment plant, makes those adjustments in that treatment process. We've been working with Brown's Hill for a number of years for, on our SCADA system. This is basically the next upgrade in that system that cloud bases the operation of the SCADA system, so that our operators can actually monitor the wastewater treatment plant when they're at home with their family and stuff. So this makes sure that we can stay in compliance, we can get alerts and alarms when, when we need to, and then the staff can diagnose those problems and determine if they need to go into the treatment plant to make some adjustments, or if those can be done remotely. And so we're real excited to, to get, moving on with this process, and because the existing process with some changes in some of the software makes it to where we can't get that remote access and stuff. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from our youth council? One of the things that really struck me is when Hyrum was talking about this, that being able to diagnose and possibly cure a problem without having to drive down, all the way down to the treatment plant, but perhaps fix it from your home or from your car or whatever, I think that the value of that is immeasurable. So with that, we would accept any public comment on this agenda item? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Brown Hill's Engineering and Controls Provide Software as a Service, SaaS, at the annual cost of $51,160 for the city supervisory control and data acquisition system as presented.
Second.
A motion in a second, please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to our next agenda item, item number 14, Ordinance 2696, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2696 on First Reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of Lot 1 of the Parsons subdivision from R4 High Density District to B2 Highway Commercial District. This is senior planner William Reese.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, and members of the public. Lot 1 of the Parsons Minor Subdivision is also addressed at 1720 Niagara Road in between St. Mary's Drive and Santo Drive. This is a 1.63 acre site, which is currently zoned R4 High Density District, and the applicant is seeking a rezone to B2 Highway Commercial District. Per the rezone criteria in Section 11712 Subsection A, excuse me, amendments to the zoning map shall be allowed only upon findings as follows: The amendment is not adverse to public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the existing zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. For some background, the property was originally annexed and zoned as part of the Moore addition in 1978. The area that's across the street, across Niagara, was annexed in 1968, and the area immediately to the west was annexed in 1980 as commercial zoning. The B2 Highway Commercial District is intended to provide businesses oriented towards serving the motoring public, encouraging the convenient exchange of goods and services along the major thoroughfares of the city. Property is adjacent to other properties zoned B2 Highway Commercial District and R4 High Density District. And then just one note on this map here, I know it says R4 right in the middle of the property, that's just due to the way the mapping software works. It is the color change that indicates the proposed rezone. The future land use map does show this area as residential mixed density high, which indicates the area is primarily intended for attached buildings on individual lots, such as townhomes, or multifamily structures, such as apartment buildings and condos. Staff does find that the proposal meets the rezone criteria in Section 11712. Conditions have changed materially since the area was last zoned in 1978. It is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and this was brought before the Planning Commission on October 22nd, and the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the rezone. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 2696 on first reading as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any questions from our youth council? In that case, since this is an ordinance, we will open a hearing. And is there any comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2696 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, Ordinance 2697 on first reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2697 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of 126586450 Road from MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District to R6 Medium Density Manufactured Housing District. Once again, Senior Planner, William Reese.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. One, two. Sorry, just give me one second here. Sorry about that. 126586450 Road is located at the northern edge of town, and this was annexed and zoned in 2000. This is approximately 1.1 acres, and is currently zoned MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. The applicant has, the property owner, has expressed interest in building an accessory dwelling unit on the property, and the MHR zoning is the only zoning district that does not allow for ADUs. And so, the applicant has requested a rezone to R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District. The rezone criteria is the same as before. The amendment shall not be adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare. The amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area have changed. The proposal of R6 is intended to provide primarily for medium density development for single household attached, triplex, and fourplex manufactured home dwellings, along with certain other compatible land uses. This is adjacent to properties also zoned R6 and MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. It is worth noting that while this, the proposed R6 zoning does allow for ADUs, the minimum lot sizes in R6 are larger than what are allowed in MHR. And so, this is actually a proposed reduction in overall allowable density. This is shown as residential mix density medium in the future land use map, indicating a variety of uses are appropriate for the area, ranging from single-family homes to townhomes or triplexes. The proposed R6 zoning does fit in well with this land use. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the rezone criteria, and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It is compatible with existing uses and zoning in the surrounding area. This was also brought to the Planning Commission on October 22nd, and they did unanimously recommend approval. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 2697 on first reading as presented. And once again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any questions from youth council? Seeing none, once again, since this is an ordinance, we will hold a hearing. I'll open a hearing and accept any comment on this item. And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to pass Ordinance 2697 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Mr. Reed, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Once again, that passes unanimously. Moving on to our final action item tonight is the City Council Consideration of the Woods Crossing Subdivision Amended Preliminary Plat. And once again, this is Senior Planner, William Reese. But Mr. Reed is going to recuse himself on this item.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And he will step away from his computer. And Mr. Reese.
Thank you again. This application is located on Outlot 3 of the Woods Crossing Subdivision, filing number 2, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of Sunnyside Road and Hill Street. This is a 14.73 acre site, which is zoned R3A Medium High Density District, and this is a subdivision proposal for 79 residential lots, along with associated rights-of-way and easements. One thing to note, this is an amendment to an already approved preliminary plat for Woods Crossing, which was approved in 2023. That preliminary plat was a greater overall area of the Woods Crossing subdivision. However, specifically within this area, that plat specifically proves 72 units. So, this is amendment that would increase this number to 79. When reviewing subdivisions, they are reviewed for consistency with the master plan, subdivision, and zoning regulations, the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, and other physical characteristics, the availability of utilities and services, the compatibility with the natural environment and unique natural features, adjacent streets and traffic flow, emergency services, protection, and impacts on area schools. The area is shown as residential mix density medium on the future land use map, indicating the areas appropriate for single-family duplex townhomes and some multifamily. Since the property is zoned R3A, the area is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences, all of which are used by right in this zoning. Properties adjacent to properties zoned R2 Low Density District, R3 Medium Density District, R3A Medium High Density District, and properties outside of city limits. This is the first page of the plat itself, as usual, which just consists of plat notes and certificates. The second page shows the actual subdivision. I just noticed the presentations are actually showing on the screen. Sorry.
We didn't notice, because we're all following along on our computers.
There we go. Sorry about that. Once again, this is the first page, which shows the plat notes and certificates. This page shows the actual subdivision. Something I will note, the area where it shows all these single-family lots, which is along Peregrine Loop and Goschok Street, all of that is actually unchanged from the already approved preliminary plat. Because it hasn't been developed yet, it does need to be shown on this amendment to the preliminary plat. The only change is to the proposed townhome lots, which are on the cul-de-sacs on the northern end of the property, shown as Peregrine Court and Barn Owl Court. The current and approved preliminary plat shows 28 townhome lots in this area, and this amendment increases that number to 35. Finally, this is a proposed phasing plan for the development, and as proposed, they would begin on the eastern side and move west, shown on here as two phases. Staff does find that the preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal is consistent with the R3A zoning district. We did bring this to the Planning Commission on October 22nd, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats, and city staff recommends approval with set condition as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or go back to any slides that maybe, maybe you missed.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel, Youth Council? I just want to make sure that people understand that increased density of those townhome models is still within our R3A zoning. There isn't a variance or anything being offered on that. It's just expanded within our current parameters.
That's correct. Yeah, the R3A zoning does allow for townhomes, which we officially call single-family attached residences. They are used by right, and the R3A also allows for multifamily development as well.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no other questions, I would accept public comment. And seeing no public comment, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Woods Crossing subdivision amended preliminary plat part 2 expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized to approve, by this approval, to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And that's four yes with one abstention from Mr. Reed. That concludes our action items. With that, we will invite Mr. Reed back into the meeting. And we'll move on to staff reports. Do we have any staff reports this evening?
So, this may have already been talked about, but I just wanted to say, I appreciate the mayor inviting me to the opioid abatement conference that we had just this last week in Loveland, Colorado. We got to see the Attorney General speak, many of the board members, along with kind of the direction that Colorado is going with the opioid funds. And so, it was definitely a learning experience for me, and I'd just like to say thanks and appreciate the invite to go.
Thank you. It was a very, very educational conference. A lot of good connections made, a lot of good information. And I'd like to thank you for stepping up to be on the Region 14 Regional Opioid Abatement Council. Having you on there is a great feather in our capital city of Montrose, and adds a great deal of depth and wisdom to that board. So, thank you for stepping up into that role.
Thanks.
Any other staff reports? In that case, we'll go to our youth city council report. Katie, you got abandoned, I see.
I did. So, I'd like to start by saying that U City Council has got in, has had a very energetic start to the year.
Move your microphone up a little bit.
Yes. Thank you. Right now, we're currently working on a proclamation. We have a few ideas in the work, and we will be presenting the finished version pretty soon. We're very excited to share it with you all. We're also working on a updated version of the U City Council manual right now. We're working on revising the wording and updating it so that it fits our current goals and what we're working on this year. We look forward to your input on that when we do present that. And we are also, in a couple weeks, both Niyadi and I are going to be attending the National League of Cities this year. It's something we attended the last year, too. It's very beneficial, I found. We do a lot of workshops with other youth city councilors from around the nation. Last year, we learned a lot about the inner workings of the city, and learned a lot about how to help our city with, and inspired some of the things we did last year. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you guys getting active in our community once again. Are there any other city council comments?
I do have one comment. Once again, in our community, we're faced with unfortunate misinformation being put out in the community concerning our taxes and our tax rate. And one of the things I'd like to point out is that our current tax rate in the city of Montrose is 3%. Well, they have a .58 public safety sales tax, and that is our only sales tax, 3.58. Any other sales tax you see on your bills, it was 1.75 for the county, and 2.9 for the state. And we, as our finance director pointed out very clearly earlier, the city of Montrose is one of the only communities that has a certain taxing that does not have a property tax to backfill other projects. We're very clear on the fact that our sales tax is the only funding source we utilize. In 2020, we put out an informational packet that showed that if we lose that funding source, we would lose close to $4 million. That was five years ago. And we can't take a $4 million or $5 million hit on our budget and expect to be able to function repairing the streets and getting the sewer fact, our sewer plant and our water operating correctly. So, with that, I would also like to point out that because of this misinformation and disinformation, that the city will once again be putting out an information push and packet, as well as we have available on our website, on our frequently asked questions portion, we have answers to all these questions. I'd encourage our community, please get the correct information and get the facts on these items. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, having finished our agenda, we are adjourned.
Thank you.